Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Lackawanna City Council April 11, 2023, Meeting Caucus. As indicated in the past, the caucus is the time set aside to allow the council members to ask questions and investigates more thoroughly any of the agenda items and talk amongst ourselves regarding the agenda items on tonight's agenda. And to that end, on behalf of the city council and the department heads, I'd like to welcome especially people at home and people here this evening. The first four, several set outs are administrative and will bypass those until the general meeting. Next is number five from Director Laxo Parks Recreation requesting city council approve veteran stadium, use of the veteran stadium by O L B Girls varsity softball team, insurance was provided. Director Laxo, anything further on that?
No, this is pretty standard. We do this every year for the O L B Girls varsity softball.
Thank you. Any of the council members have any questions on item number five? We got item number six, communication from citizens. John Ergium, who is present, submitted a communications regarding four follow-up items. John, do you want to take them during the next, during the regular meeting?
I didn't do that one.
Yeah, we'll do that then. Moving on to item number seven, communication from Carly Stockton, Olmsted Parks Conservancy requesting use Memorial Field parking lot on September 8th for the annual fundraiser. Director Laxo, do you have anything on that?
I spoke with Lauren about this. The only input that my department has is that does not interfere with anything we have scheduled at that site on that date. However, there is a much greater scope to this than my department, and I think it's more appropriate for other department heads to speak on the other potential stumbling blocks.
Director Jednik, anything on your end?
Well, 539 Ridge, we're hoping at that point is going to be in construction. So they're going to have the option to use that parking lot, you know, to hold materials. So that's just something to consider. I don't know if, you know, Chuck pointed this out, maybe they could use 790 Ridge Road, that parking lot, you know, we would just have to kind of guide her and direct her towards that. So, yeah, I'm not sure, quite sure what you guys want to do, if you want to make a contingent upon that, if you approve it. There's no permit for parking, you know, at that lot?
And it's my understanding that there's no current agreement with Douglas Jamal's outfit for the use of that parking lot?
Yeah, there isn't. But, you know, we expect them to use that land. So, yeah, I'm not-
The machinery wouldn't, and material wouldn't be stored on the, on the site itself?
I'm sure there will be things definitely stored on the site itself, and they probably, you know, in excess of that or would put it across the street, I'm assuming?
Yeah. And I know, and thank you. I know council member Anderson had a question.
Well, yeah, I had the same question. If they were reusing that lot, they could use the parking lot, park next door here for that event. I don't know how big that event is.
Yeah. So what, what should we do? Should we?
Mr. Council President, if I may, there is, there is no agreement for sure, but when the Jamal team, the Douglas Development Team was here over many meetings, they did reference that as needed, if appropriate, they would work with us or talk with us about what uses of the memorial parking lot they would need for construction. So right now there is no answer, but in anticipation of them breaking ground and being in some level of activity at that time, it probably would be prudent to, at a minimum, approve it as a contingency at a maximum redirect or somewhere else.
Unless we consider tabling this for more information.
That's another option, too.
Give us some answer from Mr. Jamal.
And we can talk to both teams, you know, 539 plus them, just say, hey, what's the schedule?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about September 8th, so we certainly have time to have those conversations.
Yeah, I was thinking that, too. Anyone else, council members have any questions? If not, then, I don't know, Chuck or Lauren, do you want to take that?
We can follow up with the Jamal team collectively and get that-
Who's going to follow up?
I'll, I'll, I'll follow.
And then I can, yeah, I can, we'll both follow up and we'll-
If you need a name, you can put me down and I'll, we'll work together.
All right. I just put you both down as a follow-up. So it might be in our best interest to table that request pending more information. Anyone else have any questions or any, anything to bring up on that item?
No, and I'll follow up with Carly and just say, we need more information, and we'll get back to you if it's tabled.
Perfect. Okay, moving on to business registrations. Nabil Haggaji at D V A L's Auto Service and Sales, 3254, 3260 South Park. Anyone have any questions on that particular item? I do. Rick, is, first of all, I thought there was a moratorium on any more used car lots in the city since we have a plethora of them. If it was, it predates me. Is this an existing, what's currently a 3254, 3260?
Well, there's, there's a business going on now, but it wasn't currently before then. I'm assuming he was under a temporary permit that was granted through the clerk's office that the cars are, in fact, more so than the, than the zoning or planning authorized.
Is this the guy that wanted to put all the U-Hauls over there?
It's, they, they-
And I noticed a couple of U-Hauls when I drove by there.
There's, yeah, I didn't see the U-Haul, but there's quite a few cars there already. And I thought that that was not properly zoned, although they might have gotten a variance. But I'm going to ask the law department for an opinion on this.
Well, I think you should refer it to code enforcement as well, and then I'll speak with them.
Anyone else have any questions on this one? Not then, I would ask to consider tableing this.
I will check on the moratorium to see when it was passed and if it's still in effect.
All right. Anyone else have anything on that business registration request? Now moving on to the next one. Belagha Aziz, E B A Little Angels Daycare, Western New York, daycare center, operating 6 to 6, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at 89 Lehigh. Anyone have any questions on that? Now moving on to entertainment licenses, Class One Live Music or Mechanical Reproductions, the Villa Banquet Center, 1830 Abbott Road. Anyone have any questions or issues on that one? The next one, Bull and D V A Abbott Lanes, 8040 Abbott Road. Anyone have any items on that one?
Can we back up?
Sure.
89 Lehigh, again, there's no one here from code enforcement, but I don't know what it's zoned. I don't know if it's a single-family home, a two-family home, or a business residence.
I could chime in here.
Yeah, please.
Part of the process when you register businesses is a form that we give the applicant that goes upstairs to code enforcement. It has to come back to our office as approved for that location. So being at us before you-
He did approve it.
Correct.
Yeah.
So he would have checked for the code status and whether or not that's a fit.
Zoning and everything else.
Yes.
Okay.
This has been, is this a renewal? Because this daycare has existed since I was a kid.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. I mean, I didn't intend it, but it's been, it's been there for a while.
Has it always been known as Little Angels Daycare?
Yeah.
Okay, because what's happened is we have a lot of businesses in the city that still aren't registered, and we have no way, there's no real process to know who is and who isn't without actually physically driving around, documenting every business, then coming back and checking it against our database. So if we do get word or one looks like, geez, I don't know if they're registered or not, we do check. So they may have just slipped through the cracks, not registered at all. There's a lot of businesses like you. We do the best we can, but like I said, short of actually driving around the city, most of the times we catch on to these when we, when somebody calls us and says, are they registered? So that may be the case here.
Haven't they inspected by the fire?
Yeah, part of the process, yeah.
Looks like they're signed off by-
They signed off.
I told you, I do.
And I believe they go through a whole, they go through a whole background with OCFS, yeah, Children and Family Services.
All right. If there isn't anything else on today's agenda, I will formally call to order Lackawanna City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 11, 2023.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk, would you please-
Absolutely.
Counsel Mufly.
Pardon?
Anderson.
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Counsel Mucridic has been excused. Counsel President Moreno.
Here.
Department Heads Law.
Here.
Development.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
Public Safety has been excused. Controller.
Here.
Recreation.
Here.
Public Information.
Here.
Hearing from citizens. Gene, anything?
Nope.
Did you want to entertain John Nall later during the meeting? Why don't we take him in the order that the agenda is set? All right. Moving on from that, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 27, 2023. Moreno moves to adopt the minutes of regular meeting, March 27, 2023. Is written?
Moreno.
Motion by Moreno, second by Moreno to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of March 27, 2023, is written. Mufly.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carry 4-0. Departmental reports, 1 through 4. Moreno moves to receive and file departmental reports, 1 through 4, inclusive. Anderson seconds. Motion by Moreno, second by Anderson to receive and file departmental reports, 1 through 4. Mufly.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carry 4-0. Communications from Division Department Heads, number 5, Director of Parks and Recreation, requests city council approve the use of veteran stadium by the O L B Girls varsity softball team. Insurance and schedules have been provided. Moreno moves to approve request.
Mufly seconds.
Motion by Moreno, second by Mufly to approve request. Mufly.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carry 4-0. Communications from citizens, number 6, standing in residence, got a communication with several items.
Good evening.
Good evening.
January 25, 3rd Street. The first item I would like to talk about has the request of use of the stage for the Lackawanna Community Fun Day event and discuss and witness the outcome.
Any of the department heads have any further information on the request?
People do that all the time, every year. It's not a problem. We set it up, we take it down. Don't see any problem with that.
That was a table, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So we can bring it forward or not?
We could, at the appropriate time, yeah.
What was the date on that?
It was the 25th and 26th of August.
It's a weekend.
It's on there, right?
Yeah.
It's Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday.
We usually set it up Friday morning and take it down Monday.
I guess, and just let me say something about Community Fun Day. Community Fun Day would have, it would have been the 10th year instead of the 8th year, except for COVID. But Community Fun Day was founded in 20, I did this, we started in 2013 because it was, it's not just about stuff for the kids and stuff. We bring 35 to 45 health vendors there, where people get services and information that they normally don't get, and they were not getting on a regular basis. We started with myself and Michael Surbiley, started this when we had the chamber, you know, and we've been, and we asked, we, money, I raise all the money, you know, I get people to donate whatever, and we make enough just to pay for the, like, the little entertainment and stuff that we have there. We honor residents, such as residents that live in the city who normally don't get mentioned, the cases like Pearlie Jones, Beanie Hughes. We, we're fortunate, we had nominated, we talked about the youth that have been, that are very active in community or future of the youth. Will we, will we talk about, will we nominate 10 individuals from the city of Lackawanna that have normally don't, we're not recognizing, but the stuff that they're doing, and we'll be honoring some small businesses. That's what Community Fun Day is about. And we don't just do it, we do it at, the goal, we do it at municipal housing one year, but we also do it at the library. And the goal is for the whole community, not just parks, to break down some walls that were being there. Because when, usually when we have something in municipal houses, every people would not come. But we were breaking that down. We had people from Beckwood Park or whatever. So it's more than just having a good day. It's about working together. That's what Community Fun Day is about. My second item is, the streetlights are still one. Have we got any more information on time and date this will be put up?
Well, as you know, John, the council approved and the mayor was in favor of that. I know there was a request, and, and I don't, I don't know where the order stands on the equipment for, but I believe we just recently were informed of the cost because the guts, the operational mechanisms of the old streetlights were removed in their totality, so all of that has to be restored. Tony?
Correct. That was discussed in the meeting we had last week. Fortunately, I had left before they discussed it, but there were a couple of council members that were there, so if they have any information on that, it was discussed in that meeting.
Yes, first, I know none of the parts were ordered yet for it.
No, nothing is ordered. It was, it's not even designed or anything. They, they were just preparing what the actual cost of the whole project was, which was given at that meeting.
Five hundred fifty thousand.
That's without engineering costs.
I believe what's secured now is through Legislature Gilmore's office, which is about 125 or, I'm sorry, 250. So there's still a bulk of the funding that needs to be-
It is going to be a while again, probably not till next year or so.
It looks like it might be a while. The cost surprised all of us. But John, I think, Rick, you, you want to add something here?
No, I'm just saying that's for one light.
Yeah, it's over half a million dollars.
Something to fund available?
Funding?
Yeah.
Well, we put, I put three of them up. I couldn't find funding for any of them.
Thank you. Request for the speed bumps for municipal housing area.
That is an agenda item for Thursday, the meeting of the Lackawanna Newly Formed Traffic Safety Board, and thanks to our city attorney, Ritu, who put together a substantial amount of material, given the legality of the speed bumps or speed humps, or however you want to designate it, in New York State. So it looks like, to summarize it, the attitude towards speed bumps has changed significantly throughout New York State, and more and more, on more and more occasions, these devices are being installed. And having read the material that Rick submitted, which will be the subject of the meeting Thursday for the traffic committee, the new phrase for all this is called traffic calming, C A L M I N G. So it's an interesting phrase. Now, I, I was able to contact our city engineers who put me in touch with the billing department, Streets Division, in the city of Buffalo. And I don't know if you were present, John, the last time Jason Havens from CPL, the consulting engineers for Lackawanna, was present, but he indicated that there was an 18-month study conducted by the city of Buffalo. There was, there were petitions and questionnaires for all the neighbors to submit in the area that would be impacted by the speed bumps before anything was done. Well, all of that had transpired, and they put the speed bumps in, and there was a significant improvement, so much so that the, they don't look, no longer install speed bumps or even speed humps, but there's, for lack of a better phrase description, a corrugated type melting of the street that puts these ruts in there that slows traffic down and is not as much of a hazard for, for vehicles traveling at that area at a higher rate of speed. So to that point, I believe there are 1,500 more locations that the city of Buffalo has installed these, these new devices.
It's funny, we were talking about a friend of mine, we're riding around in Buffalo, looking at some of them, whatever. My only concern is this, and in the summertime come, those speed bumps that we put, those temporary ones we put down, made it very, very safe for our children, whatever, because we have individuals, and they're going to do it, if there's no bump there, they're going to be speeding and they're going to run there, because they do it every morning now, and, because I get the bus and see them do it, whatever. And if one of those children get hit, a woman or around that area, we're going to have more, then it's going to be a mess. I understand what you're saying about the petitions and stuff. If we need to get some petitions, whatever, I will get some, we'll get some people together, we'll get some tissues, whatever. But we need some safety for them children, because for too long, until we put those bumps in there, we have people that are doing stuff on more than one occasion, one of our children could have got hit in the arm and get killed. Because, I mean, I'm very fortunate, I'm a grandfather and stuff, I don't want to see nobody shot here, but I know that that happens, it's going to be total chaos on the street.
John, if I remember correctly, these speed humps are at stop signs.
Yeah.
So if, if, if the hump is there, I don't see how any car would have a problem with any kind of damage, because they're supposed to stop anyways. If the speed bump pumps aren't there, they're blowing through the stop signs.
Oh, they're blowing through the stop.
So I don't see any legality towards the city or anybody else, because the speed bumps are doing their job. They know they're there, they're going to slow down, and they're going to stop for that stop sign. And just like you said, it's, it's excellent for the children to get, get through there. So, and I think the ones that were up that I've seen last year, there was no problem whatsoever.
And to further comment on that, one of the requirements of installing those speed bumps are signs that notify that the motor is traveling in that direction, that there are speed bumps placed there, so that they have prior notice before approaching that actual area, that there, there will be a speed bump. Again, it, that'll be taken up Thursday, and if it passes, the recommendation would go then to the city council to approve or not approve the speed bumps in there.
Is this going to be on Zoom Thursday? But unfortunately, I'll-
It's right here.
Okay, I'll be out of town Thursday at a conference, but I'll call.
Well, you can call me, you know that.
Yes. My other thing is, Family Dollars on Ridge Road, we have been hit with people coming into the store just taking stuff, they're in California, just going to take stuff. They've been doing it, and I spoke with John Wolf and, and the mayor, I sent him a picture of one of the individuals that were doing it, whatever. I haven't gotten back to John, and I'll talk to him later. But one of the things about, and talking to Family Dollar management is about having just one person in the store early in the morning. You know what I'm saying? It's dangerous, you know? That's not our call, but we have, you know, go hire people, you know what I'm saying? If a young lady, when it happens, that they came regular, like, just come to the store, take whatever, and it's not her job to try to stop one of them, let them know, and they call the police, and by the time the police come, they gone, whatever. I sent a picture of the individual that was doing it unoffered, the car, the car that they showed, they took a picture of, so Mr. Wolf was aware of it, whatever. Another thing is about loitering in the store, you know what I'm saying? They have one individual that keep loitering in the store, and every time they put, call, call the police, you call the police to come and put, put him out, and he come back. I don't know, and I was going back to Mr. Wolf there, there's something to be done, because you, first of all, it's bad for the business, it's bad for citizens to go in there, you know what I'm saying? Somebody in there, and always trying to pan out of you there, you know what I'm saying? We have, and we, we fought very hard for Family Dollars, to make sure that, we don't, we would hate to see it being closed over foolishness, you know what I'm saying? It's very hard to get businesses in, in the first order as it is. If we don't have, if they know they're not, people can just come do what they want to, it's going to be a problem.
John, do you know Corporate Headquarters was advised of these problems?
Oh, yeah.
And they said they're not there?
They haven't done nothing yet.
How long ago did they advise?
Last month.
Okay.
This has been an annoying problem for years.
This is a long gone problem, you know? And, and, and gotta say, we have residents that live in the community, they try to look out for Family Dollars when the bounces, whatever, when somebody said, they, they talked about it on their Facebook page about, I think the store is a great room to the residents there, you know? It saves them a lot of money. It saves them, it's very convenient for them. And if we want other businesses to come in our area of community, we have to make sure that they feel it's just as comfortable. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. Need a motion, receiving file. Moreno moves to receive and file. Motion by Moreno, second by Anderson to receive and file. Mufly.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carry 4-0. Item number seven, Carly Stockton, the Buffalo Olmsted Parks Conservatory requests approval for use Memorial Field parking lot, September 8th for their annual fundraiser. Moreno moves to table this item pending more information to be gleaned from Director Jednik and Chuck Clark regarding the use of that area by potential construction of Douglas Development. Moreno, sir. And a motion by Moreno, second by Moreno to table the request, refer to Director Development and Public Information Officer for further information regarding availability. Mufly.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carry 4-0. Business registrations. The Billagahi doing businesses, L's Auto Service, I'm sorry, L's Auto Sales and Services LLC, 35, 3254 and 3260 South Park Avenue. As we had discussed in our caucus, and having been familiar with these property over the years, I thought there was a moratorium on any further used car lots in the city of Lackawanna. Furthermore, I didn't think that that property was appropriately zoned for that, for use as that kind of a business. In addition to that, there is a request by the applicant for either the sale or leasing of U-Haul vehicles, which I think creates a different set of requirements under the code. So as a result, I'm moving to table this request and refer this to code enforcement and law department for an opinion. And a motion by Moreno, second by Anderson to table the request, refer to code enforcement and law department for further information and opinion. Mufly.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carry 4-0. Leegah Aziz doing business as Little Angels Daycare of Western New York, Inc., 89 Lehigh Street. Moreno moves to approve business registration.
Mufly seconds.
Motion by Moreno, second by Mufly to approve business registration. Mufly.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carry 4-0. Entertainment licenses. These are Class One Live Music and mechanical reproduction, the Villa Banquet Center, 1830 Abbott Road. Moreno moves to approve Class One Entertainment License. Moreno, sir. Motion by Moreno, second by Moreno to approve the Class One Entertainment License. Mufly.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carry 4-0. The Bull and also known as Abbott Lanes, 1840 Abbott Road. Moreno moves to approve Class One Entertainment License.
Anderson seconds.
Motion by Moreno, second by Anderson to approve the Class One Entertainment License. Mufly.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carry 4-0. Table items that you gentlemen wish to pull from what I have. Moreno, so moves to remove from the table the request for the city to set up a stage for what, the 25th and 26th of September?
Yes.
August?
I mean, August.
August, four days. Moreno, sir. Now, before I get into that, John, in your initial request, didn't you also have the use of the portable restrooms that were-
We don't have to in municipal housing.
That's not going to be part of this? All right. So I have a motion by Moreno, second by Moreno to remove the previously tabled request utilizing the city's stage, the Lackawanna Community Fun Days event schedule for August 25th and 26th, 2023. Mufly.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
So removing it from the table, carry 4-0. I'll need a motion to approve. Moreno moves to approve setting up stage for August 25th and 26th. Moreno, sir. And a motion by Moreno, second by Moreno to approve the request, refer to the-
And a motion by Moreno, second by Moreno, to approve the request, refer to the PWD Commissioner for assistance. Muflae.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carried 4-0. Mr. Council President.
Before we get to any further old business or new business or table items, I just wanted to announce that the Lackawanna Little, Little Loop Football Organization is having a fundraiser, Slag Banquet, I believe on April 29th this month, to honor certain individuals. So anybody wishing to buy a ticket, it's $25 for dinner, they're looking for donations, so anyone wanting to donate would be welcome also. In addressing anything further to the city council, any members have any other table items, old business or new business that wish to ring up this time? If not, Moreno wants to adjourn.
Moreno. A motion by Moreno, second by Moreno to adjourn the meeting.